Okay, we've reached our appointed hour. It's my pleasure to call the Township of Bridgewater's council meeting to order. This is our regular meeting for today, Thursday, March 30th, 2023. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting was provided on January 10th, 2023 with written notice and electronic notice provided to the Courier-News and The Breeze posting on the website and the bulletin board in the municipal building and filing with the township clerk. If we could start with a roll call, please.
Councilman Cordilla?
Here.
Councilman Norgalis? Councilman Pedrosso? Councilman Ring?
Good evening, here.
Council President Kirk.
Yes, here. Do we have any veterans in the audience by chance? Okay. If everyone would please rise, join me for Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains one nation under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have minutes for approval. The March 16th regular session that was distributed ahead of time, I believe some comments were filtered back to the clerk's staff. Are there any other edits or changes to be made?
I'll move to approve as amended.
Is there a second?
I don't think I can second him.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We can.
Okay, thank you. We'll go with Township Council reports, beginning with Council Vice President Ring.
All right, thank you. Good evening. I do have a couple items. Wednesday, March 22nd, I attended the Senior Hobby Fair, which was hosted by our Township Senior Senior, which allows senior members of the community to showcase their hobbies. It was quite a vast collection of displays from fly fishing lures to paintings to knitting, stamp collection, and even a diverse collection of items found over the years through utilizing a metal detector. I ran into Councilman Norgalis at the event, and I'm sure if he was here this evening, he would have some additional comments, but I will say it was an excellent event. Second year it's been held, and I look forward to next year's. Kudos to Jennifer and her team that run the Senior Center for their continued effort to operate an outstanding facility. Earlier this evening, I was honored to attend a preview of the Hobstown Past, Present, and Future Cultural and Historic Exhibit at the Bridgewater Commons Community Hub. The exhibit opens to the public tomorrow and runs through Sunday. It features historical items, heirlooms, photographs, and videos that tell stories, honors legacies, and looks forward to the next generation of leaders. This weekend, there will be a panel discussion on the future history moderated by Benny Macklin of WIMG 1300 AM. For those residents that have been accumulating bulky trash, I've been informed that the Spring Bulky Trash Days have been scheduled for May 13th and 20th. My next item is kind of a request, I guess, to the administration and to our council. From time to time, we receive concerns about property conditions around the township. Sometimes these involve sites that have building permits issued. For one reason or another, the construction comes to a standstill. Over the last year, I've driven past a house on Foothill Road that, for the most part, has been torn down as part of a plan to rebuild. However, the project has come to a complete halt. The town was able to require the property owner to erect a fence around the site for safety. However, the neighbors and those that drive down Foothill Road still have to look at what I would call a complete eyesore. I guess my question for Mr. Corsini and Mr. Papas is, can we do anything as far as requiring when a fence is put up around a construction site to make it some form of a privacy fence where the neighbors and the folks driving down the road don't have to look at that potential eyesore? On land use matters, earlier this week, the planning board approved a site plan approval for the new, and I'm going to apologize, Fogo de Chao, or Fogo, as their attorney actually simplified it for pronouncing purposes, at the mall. It includes a small addition of about 150 square feet to the front of the mall to create a direct entrance and vestibule into the restaurant and adding outdoor dining area to existing concrete area. The planning board also heard an application for a four-lot subdivision on Washington Valley Road of approximately 14 acres. Large portion of the site has slopes of 30% or greater. After much discussion, the applicant agreed to place all the property with slopes of 30% or greater in a conservation easement, which not only reinforces our restriction on building on steep slopes, it also prevents the cutting or removing of existing trees and landscape so as to help eliminate potential water runoff issues. Next planning board meeting is April 11th and will be a continuation of the M&amp;M Manufacturing Facility application. The last zoning board meeting was the continuation of the Catalyst sign applications, which is currently scheduled to be continued this coming Tuesday. This Tuesday would be the fifth night of hearings on these applications since January 17th. However, I was informed yesterday that the applicant's lawyer has reached out to Richard Oller, the zoning board's attorney, to inform him that the applicant will be withdrawing all three applications. Among the reasons cited, the applicant did not feel they will be able to obtain the votes required for approval. It is important to note that we have not received a written notification. This is only a verbal communication, so until written notification is received, the application remains active. However, I know this applicant, or these applications, have drawn some public interest, so I wanted to share the most recent update on that. While it does appear that application is being withdrawn, there will still be a zoning board meeting this Tuesday. They've requested to, there's a request to extend previously given approval for a new medical office complex on the corner of 22 and Adamsville, the site of an old vacant Verizon building. The applicant is working through some issues with state approvals, is requesting additional time. And then lastly, beginning in May, the zoning board and the planning board will be flip-flopping their weeks, so the planning board will now be meeting generally on the first and third Tuesday of the month, and zoning board will generally be meeting on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. Time to time, that changes, so I always recommend checking the township website for the most updated meeting schedule. And I apologize for the length, but that is my report.
Thank you very much for a thorough report. Councilman Cordilla.
Very well, thank you, Michael. The last meeting that I attended was the Thank You Event sponsored by Mayor Mench and the Township Administration, recognizing and thanking all those who volunteer their services for Bridgewater Township. And the, I do offer the opinion that the people who do volunteer their time for our community deserve certainly a lot more than what we could offer, and sincere, my sincere thanks go to all who volunteer, whether it be on a board, in a recreation program, as a coach, or whatever you choose to do. It strengthens the bond of our community. This coming Saturday, I plan on attending the Bridgewater Baseball Opening Day. I understand that Mike, good possibility it will be raining. If that be the case, that will be held on Sunday. I'll get there a little late because I have a commitment to the fire service at 9:30, which only gives me about a half hour to do that. On April 5th, I will be attending a meeting with the county regarding community block, service block grants. That is scheduled for, I believe it's Wednesday, April 5th. And then also, outside of my council responsibilities, I attended a meeting with fellow fire district commissioners to discuss the mutual concerns over county communications, looking to migrate away from the 500 megahertz band, which quite frankly could cost a significant dollars for all of us in Bridgewater Township. So more to come on that as time moves forward. Thank you, Michael.
Sure, and just an acknowledgement, the baseball opening day was moved to Sunday?
Is it?
So Mayor, you'll warm up your arm for Sunday, not Saturday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait.
The extra Tylenol Sunday morning, not Saturday?
Michael's not going to throw the first pitch again this year?
No, I'm gonna, I'm not sure if I'm gonna be able to, you know, to do as well as he did last year.
Yeah, no, the mayor will do that one. All right, so Councilman Pedrosso, we're in Township Council reports acknowledging that Councilman Ring already described the Hobstown event. I presume your extended stay there is why you were two minutes late.
Thank you, sir. Yes, that was a wonderful event. Hobstown is such an important part of Bridgewater's history, and they're certainly an asset to our community. It was very nice to be there. If anyone in the community has a chance when we're at the mall, you should definitely stop by and kind of go through and learn a little bit more about the history of Hobstown. I also attended the Somerset Regional Animal Shelter meeting a week ago, and I can't say there's anything worth of note. And lastly, I want to welcome all the Girl Scouts to the Bridgewater Council meeting. It's great to see you all here. Thank you for being here. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Sure. So I just want to acknowledge the reason why Councilman Norgalis is not here. He's a bit under the weather today, didn't want to push it and run the risk of feeling worse. As was previously mentioned, the Senior Center's Hobby Fair occurred back on the 22nd. I attended that. I was certainly very impressed by the substantial artistic ability that exists in our community, and it reinforced candidly just how little artistic ability I have. We gave everyone in attendance a chance, you know, to appreciate some fine works and crafts. I attended, let's see, on the 29th, I attended the office rededication of the home sharing organization. That will be familiar to us on the dais because at our last meeting, we took action that allowed them to accept a grant. And somewhat associated with that, they did an office rededication. They're over in the People Care Center, and so I was able to speak briefly on behalf of Mayor and council. I also attended earlier this evening the Hobstown event, so certainly encourage everyone in this audience and beyond, if you're over at the mall, or if you want to go over to the mall, that exhibit is certainly worth looking at and is going to be available tomorrow, Saturday and Sunday. One issue I spoke of at a recent meeting was our desire to be as transparent as possible with land use applications, distributing information. Two quick updates there. Working with administration, giving particular kudos to Suzanne, we now have a separate and dedicated list that residents, or candidly, non-residents can sign up for to receive special notifications, and that will include agendas for upcoming planning board and zoning board meetings. That will be publicized in what I'll call the standard biweekly newsletter. I also spoke with a member of Senator Steinhardt's staff regarding some open questions that we have about potential state legislation that could be considered that will provide even more transparency and openness as it relates to land use applications. Senator, excuse me, Congressman Tom Kane has relocated his operation, his office operation, to what I will call is their permanent location at 75 Claremont Road, Suite 206 in Bernardsville. So they have essentially vacated the small space that they had here. It was certainly, I think, a great public service that we did as a community, and certainly a thrill that there were multiple times when we had a member of Congress and residents in our building and certainly provided a temporary home to his staff. And then finally, just want to acknowledge that our next meeting is three weeks from tonight on April 20th. Based on the calendar, we're typically every two weeks. This is one of those gaps where we're going to be every three weeks. And that is my report, and I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Just a few updates. Some people may have seen that there was a lawsuit over distributing residents' emails. There was a group called Rise Against Hate, which was trying to gain access to all of our email lists that we use for our newsletters. We refused to turn that over. Local judge had ruled against us. We took it up to appellate division. And Mr. Corsini's office, along with two other towns that had similar situations, prevailed in the appellate division yesterday. So our residents' emails will continue to remain private. A lot of other towns just turned them over. We didn't, so I really appreciate the work that council's office did, and it was a great result for our residents. So we'll see if it's going to go up to the Supreme Court, but for now, it remains a strong victory, and we're thrilled over that. All right, we'll get over to the Hobstown event. This weekend, I had office hours, mobile office hours at the Martinsville Community Center, so I want to thank the folks at the Martinsville Community Center for hosting us. That was a great opportunity to speak with residents on a variety of topics. We have a few more of those coming up, so if any residents are here who want to chit-chat on whatever, whatever the topic is, just let us know, you know, sign up, stop in, and we can make sure that they're there to listen, try to answer the questions, and if not, get you answers when we can. Council President mentioned Congressman Kane's office relocating. I just want to say it was an honor to host Congressman Kane in the municipal building, and I appreciate him asking us, and I'm glad that he was able to be here. And we look forward in a couple weeks to hosting Senator Steinhardt, and we're thrilled that they're going to have the legislative office here in Bridgewater, and very convenient for us to have a center's office here in our municipal building, so our residents will have easy access to the legislative team. With that, I'm going to keep the rest of my report short. I have, I'm very excited to hear from my favorite Girl Scout troop in Bridgewater, so I will not delay that too much longer. However, we do have a proclamation first, Council President. I assume I can give the proclamation now?
Please do.
And I'm going to come down and give it, but it's, it is certainly a nice pairing of our agendas to have, to be able to recognize the work of the Bridgewater Women's Club in protecting children through CASA while we have a group of Girl Scout troops here. So it's a nice, nice to have both groups here on the same night, but I'm going to read the proclamation, and we'll come down to, women's club can come up and receive The women's club wants to come up and I'll read it. You can join me and... Anywhere you want. Usually Suzanne directs me, so if she doesn't like where you are, she will tell you where to go, so...
This is our president Janet Gatch. And the lady there, Diane, is responsible for the...
Oh, wonderful. Now, listen, it's, we got enough spam. We don't need more of it. Okay, so I will read the proclamation. Whereas, the Township of Bridgewater recognizes the crisis of child abuse and neglect and is committed to helping victims. And whereas, court-appointed special advocates of Somerset, Hunterdon, and Warren Counties recruits, screens, trains, supports, and supervises community volunteers as advocates for children who've been removed from their homes due to neglect and abuse. And whereas, adverse childhood experiences and trauma, such as those caused by child abuse or neglect, can have long-lasting effects on a child's health, well-being, and success. And whereas, survivors of child abuse need people in their lives that will consider their best interests and put a plan in action to achieve the best possible outcomes for children and their families. And whereas, the court-appointed special advocate programs have a proven record of public service in protecting the safety and well-being of abused and neglected children. And whereas, the court-appointed special advocates are assigned by family court judges to champion the needs of child abuse victims. And whereas, causes are, abbreviation for child-appointed special advocate, are everyday people with diverse backgrounds and professions who go through very specialized training to be a volunteer voice for children in the child welfare system. And whereas, the Bridgewater Women's Club has already taken steps to raise awareness by placing pinwheels on the municipal complex courtyard. And whereas, we recognize the need for collective effort as a community to enhance awareness about child abuse and work towards promoting the social and emotional well-being of both children and families in a secure, stable, and nurturing environment. Now therefore, I, Mayor Matthew C. Mench, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Bridgewater and call upon all residents to work together to prevent child abuse and neglect. We also recognize the efforts of causes in our community and commend their dedication and advocacy for the well-being of children who have experienced abuse and neglect. I encourage all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Congratulations, and thank you very much for this.
Thank you, Mayor.
I got the council to come down, thank you.
If I was to invite the rest of the council down, I'd have to all stand in front of me.
Does Suzanne allow, okay, so we're...
Yeah, come down.
Suzanne's allowing us.
Oh yeah, Suzanne, she'll tell us where to go. I'm just an authority. There we go.
And then ladies, I want all of you to sort of join here in front of me. A general rule of thumb is to put one shoulder and front of the person next to you.
Got that one? I missed that instruction.
Can we see Michael over there?
Yes, as long as you can see me, I can see you. Just on there. Ignore. Just pretend that I'm a normal person. Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies, thank you.
Thanks for all you do. Thank you. Okay, so we've reached the moment that many have been waiting for patiently, so thank you very much. So I will now recognize the Girl Scout Troop 60029. We've heard that is the mayor's very favorite Girl Scout troop.
It is, and I'm completely unbiased on that assessment, by the way.
Okay, so the floor is yours.
Bike Safety Take Action Project. We are Girl Scout Heart of New Jersey Troop 60029. We are a multi-level troop with 19 girls, our kindergarten through fifth grade. That means we have Daisies, Brownies, and Junior Girl Scouts working together to learn valuable skills and make the world a better place.
Our journey. Last spring, we started a Think Like a Citizen scientist journey in which we took part in an existing action project in nature. We first explored citizen scientists, which are people who volunteer their time to help scientists and other researchers with their work. We gathered data on squirrels in our area and submitted it to researchers and scientists. Our journey continued. Next, it was time for us to choose our very own take-in action project. We then began researching projects and began brainstorming ideas of our own. We were especially focused on projects that can help our local community. We all agreed that bike safety in our community was important.
Our proposal. We would like to put the following sign up for various places in our community. This will help alert drivers to pedestrians and bikers. At one of our meetings, we spoke to Officer Florzak about traffic safety. Based on our findings, we think that the following roads would benefit from our signs: Papin Road, Brown Road, Mount Vernon Road, North Shore Drive, Van Holton Road, Tallamini Road, Coriel Drive, and Colonial Way. Do you want to help make the world a better place? Our signs can help. Additionally, bikers can communicate with people if they're trying to cross the road or turning onto the street. Tip time! Use hand signals when you're crossing the road.
Thank you so much for listening to what we think would help our community stay safe. Thank you for considering to help us complete our important take-action project.
Thank you!
So before you go too far, I think there's two items. If each member of the troop wants to come up to the microphone and state your name, just so that you could be introduced to the full audience.
My name is Olivia. Olivia Brontez.
My name is Ainsley Goldberg.
My name is Kennedy Goldberg.
My name is Josephina Dickleo.
My name is Karina Fiala.
My name is Brianna Shore.
Okay, and there's a few others.
My name is Emenuela Mench.
My name's Olivia De Senza.
My name is Julia Mench.
My name is Emily Christopher Hale.
Okay, before you go too far, there may be some questions. You requested action, so I think that what I would like to first, see if any of my council colleagues have questions about this project, or if we want to propose a resolution recommending action as stated here to our administration and to our police department. So any questions, or should we proceed with that?
I have no question, Michael, but I certainly would propose a resolution to support this.
Okay, so I have a motion. Is there a second?
One or two.
Okay, and just so that we're, just to clarify, we are endorsing your recommendations for action by the combination of our administration and our police department. So if we could have a roll call, please?
Councilman Cordilla?
Yes.
Councilman Pedrosso?
First of all, you girls did an excellent job. Thank you for a very thorough presentation. Apparently you've been very convincing, more convincing than a lot of other people apparently that come before, so thank you for that. I do vote a yes, and if this doesn't eventually get done, I think that there is some Girl Scouts there who can probably push the mayor. I don't know, just my hunch, but who can probably get, you know, get this to move a little quicker, but I do vote yes. Thank you.
Councilman Ring?
Yes.
Council President Kirk?
Yes, so you have your approval. I want to thank you all for being here, for preparing such a thorough presentation, and also thank the parents for your time, love, and support, not only of your children in general, but of this project in particular. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Council President?
I'm sorry, let me, as a point of privilege, recognize the man.
Two quick things. I just wanted to, you know, the administration is in receipt of the resolution. Thank you, thank you all the girls for the proposal and for working with our police department. The council has endorsed your proposal, and the administration will certainly seek to try to implement it. We will communicate with all of you on what we need and what we're doing, and keep you posted on how to get the signs up and where they're going. So thank you for the presentation, and thank you to the council for endorsing the resolution. And if we could, because we never want to miss a good photo op, if we could please take a picture with the Girl Scout troop, I would appreciate it.
Sure.
[applause] 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 [applause]
All right, so anyone who's been part of these presentations and programs, you're welcome to stay, but it's certainly not required as we go to our regular business. At number nine, the meeting will be open to the public. Members of the public wishing to speak?
Don't we have another presentation?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Nobody could leave until after Jennifer's presentation, then we go. No, I'm only kidding. Sorry about that, Jennifer. So, we're gonna go to Jennifer Loughran with the Can You Dig It event, sorry. We talked about potentially flip-flopping these, that's why I made the mistake. Sorry about that.
That was already a tough act to follow. So, Jennifer Loughran, I chair the Parks Advisory Committee along with Susan Waddeli, Ashley Secora, and Melissa Ferro. On Saturday, April 22nd, 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., Parks Division is inviting the community to take part in Can You Dig It?, a volunteer Earth Day experience at Chimney Rock Road, or Chimney Rock Park. And our goal was to create like a hands-on experience that would also be a source of pride for a job well done. So, we will be planting flowers and ornamental plants, and we also have two of our local teachers from Nature at Heart School, who basically know everything there is to know about Chimney Rock Park and the absolutely beautiful trail system that we have there. Gabriel's Fountain has also generously offered to contribute, and we're gonna come up with something really cool for that. And we're gonna have a volunteer sign up at the park, which you had mentioned how you're using the mailing list to be able to communicate to a specific group of people. In working with Suzanne Mader, who, by the way, created this amazing flyer, she's also helping us put together that mailing list so that we can actually continue forward on having volunteers sign up and be able to communicate with them when we have events going on. So, the only other thing that I'd wanted to mention was that you can bring your own shovels, though we will have some there, and rain boots are a great idea, because this is a rain-or-shine event. And there's also trails that lead down to the creek where you can, you know, wade through the waters and stomp in puddles, and it's super fun, and I encourage you, Mayor, to bring your galoshes and come frolic with us.
I will do that, I will be there.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry, before you go away, any questions? Okay, my apologies for almost overlooking you, but thank you for what you and your committee are doing to make Bridgewater a better place.
Thank you, thank you.
I just wanted to thank Jennifer for doing this and for everything you do for our community. You're an active member of our community, you've come to almost all these council meetings, it's nice seeing you here. Thank you for everything you do for the Board of Ed and just for caring about Bridgewater, thank you.
Okay, so now I'll state that we've completed our proclamation, our presentations, you're certainly welcome to stay, but if there's either homework to do, or other, dinner to have, or other activities, certainly we would understand that, so we'll just, you know, wait a minute or so while the room resets itself. Okay, so in preparation for opening to the public, I'll read our statement, members of the public wishing to address council, on any matters, will be allowed two minutes to speak unless there are unusual circumstances. Can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
I'll make that motion, second.
Is there a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now open to the public. Anyone wishing to address this council, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and then provide us your comments.
Good evening, Kathy Franco, 766 Weemac Road. I know Mr. Ring talked about the fact that Catalyst is stating that they will be withdrawing three applications. My concern is that at the last council meeting, there was an ordinance that was initially going to be introduced, so there may be a fourth application. And I would hope that this council looks at that very carefully. Allowing an organization to rent a space for a non-permitted use since advertising signs are not permitted anywhere in any zoning in the township is of great concern to me. So I just hope that before the April 20th meeting, you reconsider even the introduction of that. Also, though, Tim had said at the last meeting that he had hoped that information would be shared with the public. It's two weeks later, we got nothing on what that rental agreement was in detail, or what the size of that sign was going to be, or anything else. I did send an email a week ago to every member of the council, to the mayor, to the Office of OCR, and to the Township Administrator, and I have not gotten a single response from anybody who I emailed. I am very disappointed in that lack of response. Even a "thank you, I received it, we will get back to you" would be appreciated, but no response is not appropriate as far as transparency and as far as customer relations, and I am your customer. Next is, I think the girls did an excellent job, and I think their recommendations are absolutely fantastic. My only concern is, can we bring it off the hill? Because every road that they mentioned was above 22 and east of 202206. So, you know, I would love for us to have these signs, I know bicycling and walking throughout our township is a wonderful thing, but I would hope that we could expand it beyond the scope of north of 22 and east of 202206. And I would hope that the council take that on and not throw it back to other Girl Scouts troops or Boy Scout troops. And last, Resolution 12I, it appears that there was some kind of a problem with health insurance for one of our retirees. I would hope that administration is assuring that there are no future liabilities to the township in this area, and that the health insurance benefits and pensions of all of our retirees are fully funded, and I don't know if there's some way that administration or this council can assure that there's an audit on in that respect, to assure that everything is fully funded and appropriately funded. Thank you very much.
Does anyone else wish to address council tonight? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close to the public.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, please.
So, I just, Council President, just real quick on the, a couple of quick things on the, Mrs. Franco mentioned the signs. Ms. Franco, I don't know about, I don't know why there wasn't a response, we'll make sure you get that, I don't know why there wasn't, so whatever information we have on the signs is there, it's gonna be, the application will be in front of the planning board for a cursory view at some point before it comes back to the council. Just by way of clarity for anybody who's interested on the sign topic, the three signs that were in front of the zoning board are being withdrawn. That is different from the fourth sign, which is the municipal building sign. So that's the sign that is still being considered by the administration, by the council, for which there could be future action. That information, what's out there is, you know, we have it, so I don't know why it wasn't able to be forwarded to Ms. Franco, but we can certainly do that. By way of quick update, the, I don't know what was discussed at the last meeting, but the intention of the administration is that if the sign is, if the sign is approved, the township receives a million dollars upfront. The intention is that that would be used for park and recreation improvements, that's the intention of it, if we decide to approve it. I know that that's still a decision that we're all debating and looking at the details and to lay out the sign and everything else like that, but if it is approved and that sign proceeds forward, then the million dollars that we get upfront will be used for park and recreation improvements. We have a working list, but not a finalized list of where that million dollars would go. There's a bunch of different projects that obviously the council would have to review and approve, and we'd have to talk about how we do that. That is the, where that would go. And also, just in case it's, Mike or Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, but this went out for, it was publicly bid on this, on this. So, you know, when we did this, you know, we did not handpick the company, it was publicly bid. I believe Catalyst may have been the only bidder for public approval, but this went out to anybody, they put in the bid, so this was not, you know, we have to comply with the public bidding laws, and they're the company who bid on it.
Public bid, Mayor, anyone who wanted to bid on the site?
Yeah, so, anyway, just a few facts, I don't know what was discussed last time, but to clarify some of that for anybody who's interested in public.
Real quick, though, too, just to clarify for Ms. Franco and anyone else's benefit, I know you commented that you hope we would consider your opinions before even introducing an ordinance. There was an ordinance introduced on March 2nd. It was originally scheduled for a public hearing on March 16th. There was an administrative issue that Mr. Corsini's office caught, and based upon that, at the March 16th meeting, there was a notice to postpone the public hearing until the April 20th meeting. So the ordinance for this has been introduced, there would be a public hearing and a vote on it at this point scheduled for the April 20th council meeting. So the ordinance has been introduced, just so you're aware.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other comments, let's move to 10A, this is public hearing and final action on an ordinance granting consent and permission to New Jersey American Water Company, Inc. to furnish wastewater collection and conveyance service in a portion of the township of Bridgewater, New Jersey. If I can have a motion to open to the public?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor of opening to the public?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now open to the public again for any commentary on 10A, this is the ordinance associated with New Jersey American Water Company.
Seeing no public comment, and based upon the fact that this ordinance is a necessity based upon the borough of Somerville selling their sewer system to the water company, and for those residents in Bridgewater serviced by that system, without this ordinance, they might not be able to flush their toilets, motion to close a public hearing and move for final adoption.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, before we go to a vote, is there any need for additional discussion or commentary? Okay, hearing none, let's go to a roll call vote, please.
Councilman Pedilla?
Yes.
Councilman Pedrosa?
Yeah, I'm sort of, I guess, diddying councilman Ring's comments, I don't see us having a choice. If we don't take action, we have several dozen residents that'll be impacted because of the actions that were taken by Somerville, so we have to respond accordingly and make sure our residents that we're responsible for continue to have services.
Councilman Ring?
Yes.
Councilman Hurd?
Yes. 11A, this is introduction of an ordinance vacating township authority and control over a portion of Valley View Road in the township of Bridgewater, County of Somerset, State of New Jersey. If I can have a motion to introduce, please?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any commentary needed, or is this pretty self-explanatory?
Comment by the administration as to...
The, there was a cul-de-sac, there was a cul-de-sac on paper at one point, and the road was extended, and so the, lack of a better term, the bubble of the cul-de-sac, the right-of-way retained, it was retained under the jurisdiction of the township, since the cul-de-sac is non-existent and not needed any longer, those, that area of the bubble of the cul-de-sac would then be reverted to the property owners adjacent.
As one, as one who has had some personal friends on the road, I can, the cul-de-sac has been non-existent on Valley View Road for twenty-plus years. The property that we are vacating is currently grass or landscaped otherwise by the residents, and we're just giving them back the rights to their property that they have been maintaining for countless years, so...
Any other questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Pedilla?
Yes.
Councilman Pedrosa?
Yes.
Councilman Ring?
Yes.
Councilman Hurd?
Yes, and if we could set a date for that hearing, please?
The public hearing on said ordinance will be the 20th day of April 2023 at 7:30 p.m. here in the council chambers.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move to resolutions. If there is no objection, I'd like to take 12A through D as a block together.
Can I ask you a favor? Could you do item 12L first?
Yes, that, because I think we have at least one or more audience members, yes.
Thank you, I'd appreciate it.
All right, so here's, there's actually one other adjustment, we will not be taking action on 12E, is that correct? That's been polled? We'll take 12L first, and then what I'd like to do is go to A through D together as a chunk, unless there's any objection. A through?
F.
Well, all right, we could do A through D plus F, yes. All right, so let's go to L, L is Authorizing Execution of a Developer's Agreement Between the Township of Bridgewater and Martinsville Realty Associates, LLC Regarding Zoning Board Approvals for Construction of Eight Single Family Dwellings on Block 802, Lot 131, that's also known as 802 Chimney Rock Road. Is there any commentary about that?
Nope.
Okay, I'll take a motion at 12L.
Where is this?
It's in Martinsville, right on the, it's near like Chimney Rock, yeah, in the corner of Chimney Rock and...
North of the law.
North of Law Farm, it's Mrs. Yaley's old property, who passed away about a year or two ago, so...
Are all these homes conforming?
Well, it's already approved, I mean, whatever it is, it's approved by the zoning board, so...
It's the execution of a developer's agreement.
We either approve it and we have more control over the developer, or we don't approve it, and we don't have control over the developer. But it's already gone through the land use board process.
Okay, is there a motion at 12L?
I'll move it.
Is there a second? I'll second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Hurd?
Yes?
I'm sorry, Councilman Pedilla?
Yes.
Councilman Pedrosa?
Yes.
Councilman Ring?
Yes.
Council President Hurd?
Yes, all right, thank you, so that's 12L. All right, so I'll take, unless there's objection in a block, but I'll read them individually, A, B, C, D, and F, based on their similar nature. So 12A, Authorizing Provision of a Loan in the Amount of $10,000 Pursuant to the Township of Bridgewater Affordable Assistance Program for Mary Strigala, purchaser of an affordable housing unit located at 4 Kane Court in Bridgewater, New Jersey 08807. B, Authorizing the Provision of a Loan in the Amount of $10,000 Pursuant to the Township of Bridgewater Affordability Assistance Program for Christina Almeida, purchaser of an affordable housing unit located at 173 Jessica Court, Bridgewater, New Jersey 08807. C, Authorizing the Provision of a Loan in the Amount of $10,000 Pursuant to the Township of Bridgewater Affordability Assistance Program for Hasham El Wagar, the purchaser of an affordable housing unit located at 4311 Riddle Court, Bridgewater, New Jersey 08807. D, Authorizing the Provision of a Loan in the Amount of $10,000 Pursuant to the Township of Bridgewater Affordability Assistance Program for Andrea Dudley, the purchaser of an affordable housing unit located at 2713 Packer Court, Bridgewater, New Jersey 08807. And F, Authorizing Financial Assistance in the Amount of $10,000 Pursuant to the Township of Bridgewater Affordability Assistance Policies and Procedures Manual to Edwina Vanna Tu, the purchaser of an affordable housing unit.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second. Any commentary from administration?
Nope.
Okay, if we could go to a roll call, please.
Councilman Pedilla?
Yes.
Councilman Pedrosa?
Yes.
Councilman Ring?
Yes.
President Hurd?
Yes. G, Authorizing the Execution of Documents Necessary to Enter into the Nationwide Settlements to Resolve All Opioid Litigation Brought by the States and Local Political Subdivisions Against TIVA, Allergan, Walgreens, and Walmart. Mr. Corsini, is there any commentary here, or is it self-explanatory?
The only comment I'd like to add, Michael, is that, you know, we've already received about $60,000 for this, there may be more money coming, and we're gonna be able to put it into anti-drug and alcohol initiatives in the community to supplement what our municipal alliance committee already does, so we're pretty excited about the, you know, I wish we didn't have to have litigation over the topic, but if, we're gonna have litigation, I'm glad that we're able to be a part of it.
Some good can come from, some good can come from a crisis.
Yes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call at 12G, please.
Councilman Pedilla?
Yes.
Councilman Pedrosa?
Yes.
Councilman Ring?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, H, Authorizing Professional Technical Input and Review Service With Regard to Design of a Dual Inverted Sewer Siphon To Replace a 54-Inch Sewer Line in Duke Island Park To CD- to CDM Smith. This professional service award will be totally funded by Epic Polymers, Inc., and is therefore at no cost to Bridgewater Township.
I feel like we should table this until Councilman Norgalis is here to move it, but in his absence, I will move it.
All right, well, acknowledging that, that the, the champion for projects such as these is, is typically Councilman Norgalis, I'll take the motion from Councilman Ring. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and roll call at 12H, please.
Councilman Peddila?
Yes.
Councilman Pedrosa?
I'm pretty confident that Councilman Ring is honored to be the sewer man tonight, so, yes.
Councilman Ring?
Yes, and just after I did that, I'm not sure how much the public knows. This is tied to some work that is being done by, unrelated to Bridgewater Township, that necessitates the, um, moving of a sewer pipe, and it's being paid for by others in conjunction with that work at no cost to us. So, yes.
President first?
Yes. Aye, authorizing reimbursement to retired Bridgewater employee John Nagaral of his pensions, health insurance premium, and Medicare reimbursements for both John Nagaral and his wife Joan Nagaral for May through December of calendar year 2022 in the amount of $683.02 per month, for a total of $5,464.16, and for the calendar year 2023 for $640.84 per month, for a total of $7,690. Any, is there a, a motion at, at 12I, please?
I'm happy to make that, I think, just so that there's a good public understanding on this. This is a situation where an agreement was apparently made by former mayor and a former attorney in the township who are now both deceased. This situation came to light when we transferred to the state health benefits plan last year that necessitated this. You know, the, the whole facts of it, it's been going on for a period of time, and the, the resolution is drafted by council as a recommendation that we continue this for this individual as long as he continues to be a member of the state health benefits plan. So I'd like to hope this is an isolated situation. I think it's something we need to do to resolve further issues, so I'll move it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and, and the resolution goes into considerable detail on, on, on the rationale and, and, and what we're accomplishing. If we got a roll call at 12I, please.
Councilman Peddila?
Yes.
Councilman Pedrosa?
This is obviously an issue that has, has a long history. At, this employee retired way before my time on the council, and I've been here for over 10 years. And, that's correct, right? When did he retire?
1992.
1992, so a long time ago, we could concur. And at the time, I can only stipulate that it was his understanding and the township's understanding that he would qualify to have these benefits. Some information came up later on, but considering the time period that he's been receiving the benefit, and considering the fact that I don't think we can dispute his position, it just seems logical, fair, and likely legal that this continues, so I, I will support this.
Yes.
President first?
Yes. J, this is an award of contract to Ryvax Contracting Corp. at 165 River Road, Flemington, New Jersey, 08822, as the lowest responsible bidder for the Billian Morton &amp; Klein Improvement Project in the base bid sum of $1,140,734.91, funded through the 2017 and 2018 Capital Sewer Fund. One bid was rejected on advice of council due to missing subcontractor disclosure. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
And a roll call.
Councilman Peddila?
Yes.
Councilman Pedrosa?
Yes.
Councilman Ring?
Yes.
President first?
Yes. K, award of contract to CMS Construction, Inc., located at 521 North Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey, 0760-7060, for the Camp Cromwell Partial Dam Removal Project in the sum of $287,790, funded through open space. Mr. Papas, any commentary?
No, this is a project that we wanted to undertake, quite some time. It was rather complicated, D and B has weighed in and limits the timeframe of when the work can be conducted, but we're glad to present it to the council.
Any questions?
Didn't, didn't we remove some dams a couple of years ago? I seem to remember, okay.
Yeah, this is, this is, I think, the rest of the partial.
And, and just for clarity, too, the, what the state defines as a dam, some of us may define as a small spillway. Just, we're not removing dams of, you know, that, like, what blocks the reservoir, you know, these are small structures for the public's benefit.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, correct?
No, we don't.
Oh, we don't? I need a motion.
Okay.
I think that's a motion. A second, please?
I'll second it.
Okay, and a roll call vote.
Councilman Peddila?
Yes.
Councilman Pedrosa?
Yes.
Councilman Ring?
Yes.
President first?
Yes. Okay, we've taken care of L, so moving to M. Authorizing change order number one, final change order decreasing the contract price from $601,865.50 to $498,498,835.76. That's a decrease of 17.12% or $103,029.74. Authorizing acceptance of the project, release of the performance bond, acceptance of the maintenance bond, and final payment to Paveway Inc., located at 40 Radell Avenue, Bridgewater, New Jersey, 08807, for the 2022-1 roadway improvement project, which was the entire length of Newbury Street, Radell Avenue, and Ramsey Street, funded through the 2022 Capital Road Fund. Any, any commentary on this? Certainly good news that it's lower than we expected?
As you can see, we're proposing to close out and release the projects, and we're glad to close these things out.
Okay, uh, is there a motion, please? Or actually, is, is there a will to potentially take M, N, O, P together? All right, so, so let me, let me, let me do that. Let me also read N, O, and P. So at N, authorizing change of scope to the professional services contract, increasing the contract price by the sum of $14,819.60 for additional construction inspection services for the 2021-2 roadway improvement project, which includes entire length of Brahma Avenue, Kalarni Street, and Poplar Street to McMahon Associates, Inc., located at 4573 South Broad Street, Suite 200 in Yardville, New Jersey, 08620, from the contract price of $127,760 to $142,579.60, funded through the 2023 capital bond. O, authorizing change order number one, final change order decreasing the contract price from $775,653.38 to $598,932.10. That's a decrease of 22.72% or $176,133.28. Authorizing acceptance of the project, release of the performance bond, acceptance of the maintenance bond, and final payment to DeSantis Construction Incorporated, located at PO Box 6030 Somerset, New Jersey, 08875, for the 2022-2 roadway improvement project. That was the entire length of Chestnut Street, McGovern Court, Tracy Road, Walters Brook Drive North, and sections of Maple Street and Oak Street. We'll just fix that. Tiny. And that's Ardmere Drive to Old York Road, funded through the 2022 Capital Road Fund. And P, authorizing change order number one, final change order increasing the contract price from $976,845.54 to $1,002, sorry, $1,2,377.32. That's an increase of 2.61% or $25,531.78. Authorizing acceptance of the project, release of the performance bond, acceptance of the maintenance bond, and final payment to Top Line Construction Corp., located at 22 Fifth Street, Somerville, New Jersey, 08876, for the 2022-5 roadway improvement project. That's the entire lengths of Bryan Drive, Hayling Court, Hodge Drive, Kale Drive, Lindberger Drive, Logan Road, Mercer Street, Richard Street, Sussex Avenue, and a portion of Linville Lane, funded through the 2022 Capital Road Fund. So, Mr. Papas, any commentary, I know, on, on N and P? There were some, uh, let's see, increases at O, there was a decrease.
But the, the main reason for the increases is field conditions necessitated additional inspections. And I know at Brahma, there was some additional drainage work that was needed, and just required additional inspection, inspection time to ensure that the work was completed properly.
Any questions from council? Motion on M, N, O, and P taken together?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Sure.
All right, and a roll call, please.
Councilman Peddila?
Yes.
Councilman Pedrosa?
Yes.
Councilman Ring?
Yes.
President first?
Yes. Q, acceptance of a bid for New Jersey Plenary Retail Distribution Liquor License as the sole qualified bidder to Suri Ready of Bridgewater Wines, LLC, 674 U.S. Highway, 202206 in Bridgewater, New Jersey, 08807, in the amount of $451,000. If I'm not mistaken, this is the incremental liquor license that Bridgewater qualifies for by having over 45,000 residents. We have roughly 46,000 residents. So I don't believe any additional commentary is necessary. I don't think any questions are likely.
Brief comment.
Sure.
We put this out to bid last year at a higher minimum bid, received zero bids. We put one out, oh, two or three years ago, and we received a much higher amount. The state of New Jer, the governor has made it no secret that he is looking to change the liquor license, alcohol beverage license system in the state of New Jersey, which will make licenses more affordable for folks, but it will make those that hold licenses less valuable. So it's putting a lot of turmoil out there and, and people waiting to see what happens. So the fact that we were able to get $451,000 out of this after not having any bids last year, I think, is a good thing. But I think we also just need to continue to watch what transpires with the liquor licenses in the state, because for many of our licensee holders in the township, the, you know, licenses that they paid close to a million dollars could be worthless in the next year. So it's just something we should be aware of.
I'll agree that we need to monitor that carefully. I don't know that they'll ever be worth nothing, but certainly they could be worth dramatically less than what they were paid for.
The plan now, supposedly, the most recent proposal, is that someone that wants a liquor license will apply to the state and pay $30,000 to the state of New Jersey for a liquor license, and that's how they will obtain a liquor license.
My question, I, I guess that we would also need to be care, we need to carefully follow, potentially follow up with our legislative delegation, is obviously $30,000 is a very small sum, but who gets that?
The state.
The state, so we get none of it.
Yeah. And, you know, the other piece of this, I will also thank Mr. Savo of Mr. Corsini's firm, because earlier this year, I surfaced my concerns regarding the state's actions and suggested, you know, if we wanted to do something with this opportunity, we needed to move sooner versus later. So I thank Mr. Corsini's office for getting this done.
So it seems distinctly possible this will be the last time in history of...
Could very well be.
For a resolution of this type, so I'll take a motion at, at 12Q, please.
I'll move 12Q.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Peddila?
Yes.
Councilman Pedrosa?
No.
Yes.
Yes. And R, our final resolution tonight. This is a person-to-person and place-to-place transfer of plenary retail consumption liquor license from the licensee Ruby Tuesday Operators LLC, Bridgewater, and this is license number 1806-33-011-009 to the applicant Fogo de Chao, wow.
So, so, so their attorney the other night at the planning board meeting says just call him Fogo.
Okay, well, it's in, it's in the record what it truly is, and they are, they go by the name, Fogo de Chao. This is a new license number to be issued, 1806-33-011-010, for premises to be situated at the Bridgewater Commons, 400 Commons Way, space 2690 in Bridgewater, New Jersey, 08807. I need a motion, please.
So just for the public's benefit, very briefly, I touched on this during my council report earlier this evening, but Fogo, Fogo did appear before the planning board the other night and received approval for, for what they're doing. Part of this liquor license will include the addition of about 28 seats outside for outdoor dining. They did go on the record during the planning board meeting that the only music that they would have outside would be ambient background music, not any form of live instruments or DJs or anything like that outside. So I'm happy to move 12R.
Okay, and, and just for clarity, this is, they're, they're doing like a Rio Dizio type of a...
It's a Brazilian steakhouse.
Okay.
Will be a Brazilian steakhouse. As you approach the mall, and Uncle Julio's is on your right, there's what's currently the old Microsoft Store right there on the left. They're going to put about 150 square foot addition there, which will be a vestibule with an outside entrance to the restaurant. If you were to enter the mall by Uncle Julio's, there would be a second entrance to the restaurant immediately on your left. And if you were to go down the hallway where the entrance to the community hub is now, the old Microsoft Store, there would be a third entrance there. They're taking some existing sidewalk space and adding 28 seats, which will have a fence up around it to distinguish the area. Even with that, though, there's no increase in ground coverage, and as I said, the only music outside would be ambient background music through speakers.
Well, you have presented such an attractive picture. I will second.
I, I think we're all excited for it to open, so.
Okay, so roll call at 12R, please.
More than you.
No.
Councilman Peddila?
Yes.
Councilman Pedrosa?
Yes.
Councilman Ring?
Yes.
Yes, all right, I'm told we do not...
I lied.
Have, we, we do, or we do not have closed session?
We do have a closed session, short, I promise.